Hello and welcome to the East Lampeter Township Public Meeting. All participants are now informed that this meeting is being recorded. This meeting is also being offered virtually utilizing Zoom, which is a cloud-based platform for remote video and audio conferencing. The Zoom application is free to the public. The general public is therefore able to join the meeting by connection through the Internet or by calling in by phone. The public is also able to observe the meeting on the township's YouTube channel. Please continue to check the township website calendar for any updates related to these public meetings. Agendas for these public meetings will also be available on the township's website. Please be reminded that this meeting is being video and audio recorded and will be posted to the township's YouTube channel for viewing. The meeting will now proceed with the chairman calling the meeting to order and identifying all other members present in the meeting room and those joining the meeting via Zoom. The chairman will then confirm those members joining by Zoom can be heard.
Evening. Welcome to the East Lampeter Township Planning Commission. He's calling it to order. Present this evening was the planning commission. Derek Seesaw, chairman, Randy Patterson, Sarah Ryder, and via Zoom, Jason Dagan. Four members that are present representing the planning commission. Also in addition, from the township is Colin Seesaw, the director of planning and zoning officer, Dave Sinopoli, assistant zoning officer residential, and Alicia Air, assistant zoning officer for commercial. And I believe we have Fernmore Homes on Zoom. And they may be muted at the moment. So I think those are the two. Jason, can you hear us?
Hi Ken, can you hear me?
Yes, thank you. With that said, first item would be pledge of allegiance. If you could join us, please.
A pledge of allegiance to the flag, the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, liberty and justice for all.
Next item is approval of the minutes from the February 14th commission meeting. Changes or additions. Hearing none. Little different this evening for this side. Since we are being recorded, we're going to ask when we vote that we vote individually, so I'll call you by name. And if you can say yea or nay or abstaining, as the case may apply for any item. So we have a motion by Randy. Do we have a second to approve the minutes?
A second.
Thank you, Jason. So we have motion to second. Randy, are you in favor?
Yes.
Sarah?
I'm abstaining because I wasn't present.
Well, you're in second. Jason? Do you approve the minutes from February 14th?
Yes, yea.
Okay, and Daryl Seesaw also approves. So we have three yays, one abstained. So, so moved. Our next item is old business, none this evening. So we'll move on to new business. First item under new business will be Plan 2022-24, Mount Sydney Road Associates, Sydney Road Whitmer Track subdivision plan. And good evenings. I don't need to ask you to come front because you are. You can identify yourself. And as you heard, the meetings being reported, we identify ourselves. Proceed with your presentation.
Thank you. Questioners and town officials. My name is Chris with RGS Associates. As well as Parkins, with us on behalf of the Mount Sydney Road Associates. With track subdivision, we get a 48. For those of you that were involved or at least part of the sketch plan review, there's not much change for the design. Or those of you who are not, I will give just a brief overview of what. The parcel is currently about a 10 acre lot, where proposed is a 15 mile subdivision, 14 of those lots would be single-family, resident of home. One of those lots being the toll owner man still doing some of his furniture that should be maintained, established each a way. Also involved with this project is the neighboring Chubb property to the south, where the current access is off of Mount Sydney Road. With this project, the existing Chubb access drive would be demoed and a portion of the parcel will be conveyed to the Chubb property, thus providing access off of the extended Suta, Suta and Drive. So that's the synopsis of the project for those who weren't involved. We are receipt of the March 7th DMA review letter. And I believe that most technical items are heavily addressed, leaving most remaining comments are administrative. Some of the comments we'd like to go over just in brief discussion as well as the LCPC comment that are due to. Personally, that 2020. Before we go over, at least jump into some of the questions. Those two letters, is there any questions regarding this project?
You with yours?
Yeah. Just, oh, bring, go over the three waivers that we are requesting. One of them will be the subdivision plan. We believe that because there is no long-term phasing and most of the, or all the requirements rather, for a perimeter plan can be met by providing a final plan. You feel that this is sufficient to.
Jason, which I believe you're aware, if that's granted, you still need to do all the preliminary plant requirements as part of it. You just skip that step and combine everything at once. We'll do everything, but it's all in one package.
The next waiver request is the volume control loading ratios. With support from our QOTech that is part of this project, we believe that we have support as well as the DP standards at this point do not include said loading ratios that are part of some of the municipality ordinances included in these. The last one is the conveyance pipe design cover. There is a sewer, existing sewer line running from south to north, where the system at point of connection is relatively low, relatively shallow ground. So the connection for the storm pipe to be able to discharge into our basin is fighting for spaces. So we are proposing a 15-inch RDP pipe, which should provide structural support, but also minimum cover. But that is just brief overview of the three waiver requests. Staging to the DMA review letter dated March 7th. Oh, good news. Amen. In the additional excerpt there, in italics, if you have that in front of you, there is about. At the area where the sidewalk is being proposed, which again, for those not familiar, we're proposing connection from the frontage of 474 Mount Sydney Road to the existing sidewalk that is Stevie High School frontage. So in relation to that comment, if there is an area where the sidewalk is proposed, not within the PA dot for township-owned land, land will need to be dedicated, additional right-of-way will need to be. In coordinating with the traffic planning associated with this project, it's our understanding that Penn Dot will not take additional right-of-way or simply just a sidewalk. So we're looking for guidance about how we should move forward with this is going to be treated as a pedestrian easement, a temporary green easement for when that does, if that does go through design. So just some guidance on that.
Have you looked into design? Will you not be able to do it within the existing right-of-way?
So the currently we have it proposed that there is two or three utility poles. If we would keep it within the existing right-of-way, that would need to be relocated. So we're requesting to propose it outside or beyond those utility poles and being able to provide additional easement on the two properties that have frontage on 474 Mount Sydney Road. Sorry, I can't think of the property address at this point, but there's one other additional lot in between.
So I can. So the developer of this property also controls this land too. So what we desire to do, if the sidewalk can't remain in the right, I'm not going to wait here. This is what we're looking for. We will secure an easement necessary to have a sidewalk inch outside be as needed to protect those poles and just kind of keep them in place. And there'll be a grain strip between the curb, post curb and the edge of the sidewalk.
Well, as you move forward, obvious, but even dial. And then dial with the township so that their needs are met, but also satisfied with the sidewalk.
Yeah, we wouldn't necessarily pose the easement to be the temporary responsibility or anything like that. It would just be the land of the easement is located.
Well, with any easement, as you know, there'll be a no and a agreement. So that language would be spelled out, not agreement as to the responsibility of that property in the easement.
Then the last item we just want to bring to discussion that's related to the LCPT letter dated 12. Any question is coming up. That's my commentary. They're asking for the plan to depict all proposed individual on lot wells. In this case, the utilities are public sewer, but also private wells. So in this case, do not believe it's ordinance requirement to depict the private wells, but also the lots are not secure as far as where those buildings are going to fall. So as far as separation distance, we feel that that can be delayed at this point, at least until those buildings are set. So as far as support as a condition, I'm not sure how the township.
I think part of the concern here was not to conflict with the public sewer line, which I assume the sewer will be on the cul-de-sac or upon sewer.
Correct, so it will be in the street.
It is a means of some narrative that indicates that that will be coordinated at the time. Sewer easement, et cetera.
And I think with the as-built at that time, you'll know where obviously. So it can be picked up there.
You know, imagine calling each individual building to show the location of the well.
You have some assurance that there is adequate water supply.
We have not done test wells or anything like that. But we, this property here is on a well. I know the Chubb is on the well.
You know, I think that was a comment under Dave Miller's letter. Is there adequate supply that those 14 additional wells would not impact the current properties that are well.
So it's public sewer that's present.
Anything else on the counties? From your.
I have one, Daryl.
Yeah. That's what I was just going to let him finish. It's a little unclear for me on item six, excuse me, item five, a waiver would be requested for Sue Ann driving Mount Sydney for the site distance requirements.
So we believe that that comment has been addressed. Based on the initial submission, there was an error in the site distance table that we had provided. So that, I believe, had generated that.
Okay, well, that was because there's an earlier review than our engineers and general engineer doesn't miss that. That's always, it's an obvious one if it's right or wrong. So it appears you do meet the requirements.
That was actually in the first review letter by Dave. And that's where the error was found. So that.
Yeah, we saw the 100 foot clear site triangle, which is double what's required. So we were not sure why the county made that comment.
And we didn't make a formal recognition to LCPC at that point.
Well, it's just depending on the motion goes generally saying you meet all the requirements of their letter. But you already have, so in a sense you haven't yet. Yeah, the waiver is not needed, so.
You're just number four. So the tree protection zone we do with this iteration do are proposing a few protections along the western trees here that are two remaining and also the southwestern trees here as well, which will show up on the ES plan.
Okay. Partner, any finding commission?
Question on sidewalks. So the sidewalk is coming down into the development and then there's on both sides of the cul-de-sac. And then does it extend south? I don't know if that's south.
Right, it will extend to the frontage of both the property in question as well as the neighboring Chubb property.
Okay, and then does it go beyond? Is there one beyond that or is it stopped there? It stops there, okay. But then north, it goes up to the school. It connects with the school. And then so kids who are living here can go up and it can be on sidewalks the whole time. Okay.
Okay. With that, there and under subdivision, there's reference to sidewalks. When I understand, you're showing sidewalks, but not.
What the plan that was recently submitted is only shown.
Okay. Not sure what the motion will bring, but you should have curvy. Given the nature of Mount Sydney Road, the speed, the school, there is curving at the school.
We have, we have decided that's doable because Penn Dot's going to require it as well. We actually had a conversation about that. We found out through route would be, would be interested in seeing curving. And honestly, I agree. So we're going to include with our resubmission, curving and sidewalk as to the Penn Dot.
Yeah, but just curving is career safety and it's a minimal physical barrier for pedestrians and people on the, you know, sidewalk.
Feedback to go from the traffic engineer. So let's just include it in there. We're doing the work down right away.
Yeah, depending on the motion, you know, that was the first comment, sidewalk. Recommendation is also include curvy along Mount Sydney. I believe you have the cul-de-sac curb, right?
Yeah, curb and sidewalk are in the top.
Issue with the remaining. Any other discussions? Well, look for a motion.
Plan number 2022-24.
Do you have more questions? Or is there a question?
Are you guys talking to me?
Yeah.
No, it keeps cutting in and out. I'm just trying to listen, that's all. I was trying to listen to the motion.
2022, 25, I thought, sorry, 27. You said, you did, Randy. You said 24. Be recommended for commissioner, absolutely. In accordance with this David Miller Associates letter dated March 7th, 2023, losing the labors of these ones to be granted as requested. And the county planning commission department letter dated September 22nd, on two, with the addition that curbing would be included along Mount Sydney Road where a sidewalk would be installed.
So we have the motion. Do we have a second to the motion? Do we have the motion and the second? Any discussion? Hearing none, we'll take a vote. Randy? Sarah? Jason?
Aye.
And I vote in favor. So four ayes, motion passes. Thank you. Our next item on the agenda is Plan 2022-25, Fernmore Profile redevelopment master plan. Identify yourself and.
Good evening, Brisbane RGS Associates. Tonight live Fernmore. Yes, and this is why we're here tonight to talk about the proposed master plan on property. We were here last month, we're freezing, I am still really just picking up where we left off. So next time, if possible, you know, to have a screen up for the overall progress rate. So I'll just give a brief history and the background of review of the three that we're left. But I'm also happy to have the prior since last month and the resubmission of the master plan. So dating back, we had met with staff. Worked out concept for the redevelopment property. We provided a master plan. That master plan had review inputs from staff from the planning commission as well as the board supervisors. From that input, we went back to the drawing board, made revisions to the site plan. May recall, the major changes we made to the plan, we increased it. We started a plan that was around 300 dwelling units for the multi-family portions. And about 400, now we're at 500 dwelling units. Ended up playing really important for Fernmore with what this property can absorb, we feel that where we need to be. And also obviously to have all those, you know, cheat apart all those units. So there's a vast amount of pervious on the problem. And we talked about last time, we were sacrificing the character layout of the community to try to have the size of green spaces, particularly the green space in the center of the project. But in any event, we do feel that based on some quick analysis that could be less than pervious in the proposed condition than what's out there today. So again, very briefly, the application is in for the master plan this evening is to get a recommendation from the planning commission to move forward to the board supervisors. We still have lots of work to do after that. We are successful, we would then be back to review as a land development plan, where we look at taking it to full engineering, installing or matching. There's all those things that are typical of the subdivision land development ordinance. So this master plan covers the entire 65 acre parcel in the C3 zone. Obviously, you're very aware of the struggling retail situation out here at Rockville. So this master plan, we are hopeful is successful in transforming it into revitalized parcel, really introducing those rooftops to help then spur that interest in filling out the rest of the retail. And of course, we're removing about 267,000 square feet of existing retail that would be displaced into around the perimeter, which, you know, in thinking through commercial layout, that's really the optimal place to put that retail near the roadways. We're also showing some redevelopment parcels on western side where mixed-use building, the commercial retail on the first floor, potential points above, trying to again utilize that space better versus right now, which is a vast open parking lot. Some redevelopment along the front 30 where there's entire commercial retail buildings are looking at basically redeveloping those to attract different uses such as restaurants, trying to maybe alter some of the existing retail links off of Route 30 based on some feedback from staff. Maybe having some opportunities for some outdoor dining areas or gathering spaces. And then definitely the plan responds to the streetscape plan, which I know is very important to the township. So we have that interconnectivity that is certain in the project that allows for those bicycle and pedestrian linkages throughout the parcel. So at this point in time, since our last resubmission, we have received a second round of reviews from township staff as well as your township engineer DMA. DMA really had one people commenting before. Really that everything had been satisfied from product use and dialogue. And they're just kind of documenting the dialogue with the implications for the plan. But it looks like we're pretty good decision to try to advance the plan. So at this time, unless there's any questions on the project, we'll seek out more recommendations to move the project forward.
Comments from the planning commissions?
Thank you for adding additional units. I would consider adding more. We can accept 12. You've at least met the county standard for the county master plan. So I appreciate that effort to do that. But as you look at other locations and renovation of other buildings and structures, perhaps that creates opportunities to the one. My second comment is a repeat of my comment last month about the top lot. I see you created a clubhouse with a swimming pool and volleyball, fire pit, horseshoe, outdoor. I'm not sure why something small could be included there for children as well. So that children, assuming there may be families, even single parent families living in these apartments, do not need to go down to the top lot. Well, I understand the reason for putting a top lot there so that the commercial space can also make use of that. But I'd still ask them to consider having some children's recreational opportunity around the. But I'd still ask them to consider having some children's recreational opportunity around the community building area.
Yeah. Where is it now on the plan? And I missed it.
And I appreciate the comment. And as a master plan, we say we're absolutely open to that. We internally consider. In the center of the main green there where we show like a structure like a gazebo, perhaps that's an area where the top lot could be. And we really, what our goal was to get those programming elements on the plan. Think about where it might be appropriate to place them, but shifting around, absolutely. I think that makes sense. And we're going to continue to evaluate that to see what makes sense. I think at one point in time, there may have been some feedback to get that top lot up. So it could be utilized by both the commercial and the residents. So. I don't think we're opposed to either. Really, I think we'll think that through and see what makes sense.
I'm not talking about a huge playground. I'm talking about even a single unit that many of the obvious. Business people make in this county, that people just have the opportunity to swing climate.
Any other that follow that? That is on that corner of the one. Where there is a drive, which generally is. Service vehicles. We'll come back. Isn't that on the backside of the commercial building?
There is a cave in behind that existing building that's to remain.
Generally, isn't that for service vehicles to come in and deliveries and. Maybe staff to come through. There's no parking or anything there. Looking at trucks and it's right in the curb coming around the back and. For the safety as well as, yeah. The children, maybe they're, yeah, I'm with Randy that a better location, I think, could be found for. A number of reasons.
That's a good reason. That was a patch of common to kind of locate that more towards the commercial. So both uses could use it, but and look like Chris said, it can be moved. Throughout iterations of this plan and stuff, so.
I have a couple of questions. I apologize. I wasn't here last week or last month, but how many units also get residential units are there altogether?
We're proposing five hundred and four.
Okay. And what type of like, what are they like one bedroom, two bedrooms?
It's gonna be a mix. If you're looking for specifics, I'll defer to Fernmore if they're able to offer more. I believe they mentioned it last time. I know that's been fully programmed out, but I believe it's going to be a mix of one and two bedroom at least.
Last one, not to speak, they said one, two and three, but I don't think we had a percentage of. Ten, twenty, fifty of anything.
And are they market rent? Great. Is that what they are? Okay. And so what type of residence are you? Going to be targeting? That's probably not a question for you.
Well, I don't know if anyone from Burnmore could.
Like families, you know, singles.
Can you hear me?
Yeah.
Okay, so we went through this last time, last month, and there will be a mix of one, two and threes predominantly twos. I don't, we don't have the exact percentage, but. It'll be more twos than the ones, threes. I would assume something like. Perhaps fifty percent twos and then the balance would be ones and threes, but we don't have that exactly. We can get that before we come back. Well, we're fully engineered. And the other question about what it's market rate, what was the question about? What type of people was the question?
Are you shooting for like families or, you know? Single business people like I'm just curious like what type of housing this is geared towards.
It's geared to. And for with five hundred and four units, it's geared to all. We will, we're looking to accommodate any and all. That want to live here. So we will, we are posing a great community that should be, that should work for. We have larger units for families. Those will be the three bedrooms. But we also have ones and twos and. So we're looking. Whoever wants to, you know, we're not, we're not, we're not restricting to any particular one type.
I'm just curious what, what you're looking for. And so what elementary school is this in? You know?
Believe we said last time, Smoke Town.
And.
Yes. Somebody on Zoom comment?
There was, sir, feedback on there.
And then all these other buildings, like the commercial buildings, are those all intended to be commercial buildings, not residential buildings? Is that the? The goal of that?
Correct. Right. So the. Commercial retail that would be removed is replaced with the rendered area you see where apartments are proposed. And then the existing aerial view of commercial buildings, those are proposed to be retained. And what we look to do. Enhancements, architectural features and elements to improve the visual aesthetic of those buildings. And attract new tenants, but then also can relocate tenants who want to stay at Rockville. You can, Fernmore could probably speak to this more than I can, but there's a lot of excitement among the tenants based on their dialogue with them. About the potential to begin bring all those rooftops onto the property and then do some of the enhancements that we're talking about for the commercial portion.
You're not building any new commercial buildings. They're all existing commercial buildings that you were just going to renovate and okay.
Or replace completely. We talked about the. Corner at South Willow Dale and Route thirty. I believe it was an old diner at one point, but just. Yeah, with a new restaurant.
Thanks. I'm sorry you had to repeat a lot of.
With, with the commercial, I mean, most of the focus. On this master plans with the residential. Amenities to be added, you know, the residential buildings and amenities, but the commercial, there's now just. If we can get some idea like numbers, there's forty or so current commercial. Entities housed there. With the buildings that are remaining, how many potentially? Or might they be able to encompass, you know, just for numbers out of the numbers, if there's forty there now. Are there potentially sixty in the remaining commercial to add some new or? I'm hoping there's enough to accommodate the ones that are now, but also for some additional commercial.
I think hard to say quantity. I think we speak usually in percentage of retail space or square footage of retail versus the quantity of tenants, because in some cases you might have a tenant takes. You know, three thousand square feet, you might be a tenant comes in and takes thirty thousand square feet.
Yeah.
So hard to say. But I, when you mentioned thirty-nine or forty, I think that sounds about right. That's a call and. Fernmore may be able to speak specific to that, but I think they're. Today, I think we're down to maybe that many.
Yeah, I had seen it one time, not recent, but I thought it was somewhere around forty. But I was this today if it's changed, you know, well, square footage then. Relative to square footage that we will have remaining in the buildings retained. With the square footage with those entities, those commercial entities that are there now. Is there some idea of that?
Well, yeah, we would be, right now, the whole property is around five hundred, I'll just say five hundred fifty thousand square feet. We're going to be removing about two hundred and sixty-eight thousand square feet. So the balance would remain and then again be redistribution. Reallocation of those tenants to those existing spaces that will. Fill it at that time after the relocations is where they're obviously been attracting new tenants to fill out the space.
At least, at least have about twenty percent of the remain after relocating. The existing tenants. In the buildings we're demolishing, we still have about twenty percent of the remaining space that needs to be filled. So yes, there's room for more tenants. Okay. Well, that leads me to my next comment that. Given, as someone talked, the residents that you will be accommodating, whether it's. Empty nesters, professionals, families, whatever it might be, may dictate some of the commercial that you should entertain. You know, like a small grocery store or dentist or. Things that would make this more of a. Community or a neighborhood, whatever you want to call it, that would benefit those folks and enhance their moving there that they would walk to. We are having some initial conversations with the grocery store chain. That we've worked with before in Delaware. We, we agree with you. Yes, that, that, that's the idea that we can now introduce some. Natural friendly retail as well as the existing outlet centers to fill out the space and make it successful. Now, we have, we have started some of those conversations. We're nowhere near a conclusion, but it's, it's also, this is all being talked about. Nothing's happened in the field yet. So they don't, they don't, you know, they, they have to see something happening. But yeah, that's the idea. It's my concern that you didn't. Opportunity, keep the door open for the opportunity to add commercial. Entities that would complement the residential. Five hundred and four units is going to be a thousand or more bodies.
As it hopefully gets to.
Yes, that is the idea. I'll tell myself I'm mute, but I think, yeah, the answer is yes, that's the idea. Yes.
Folks want to see the rooftops. They might be there for rooftops. I like to see the tops.
Yes. Well, makes sense. Yeah, it's just, and I said, some of the. The emphasis has all been on natural, but. Just, and it'll come, it's just, we're not seeing it now. The master planning mall. Yeah, I hope we see you before three years, which is a requirement to update the master plan. I hope the communication continues that as, as it has now township. And keep both sides well informed. So each know what's going. I think as you've seen, the township's been very willing. To work with you to move this forward. To meet the requirements and meet your needs and that dialogue. Doesn't end when the plan gets approved. Obviously, especially since you're going to phase it. We haven't seen a phase in yet. What comes next? You know. First, second, third. Phases are maybe. Other comments? I believe this is our. Commercial redevelopment overlay master plan approval. For the township. This really comes as a recommendation. The planning commission to the supervisors on the master plan to move forward, as you mentioned in the beginning, with the actual subdivision land development plan. So. I. I'll make a motion. That the planning commission makes a recommendation to the. Supervisors. To approve the master plan. But the understanding that you'll continue to work with them. And that as you move forward, you know, some more emphasis could be played on the non-residential parts, which. You gave us a lot of details in the residential, but not much. So you kind of set us up to. You know, to equal out that to get more on the non-resident. And continue working as we mentioned with top lot. To move it forward with, with the township. And also like to thank you. Both Burnmore and Chris for your diligent work in moving this forward and coordinating with the township. We appreciate that. And just to reference the Dave Miller letter of March ninth, having one comment which says, everything looks good, so. With that, I'd recommend. Approval to the supervisor. Relative, we'll add a motion. Randy just gave a second. All those in favor? Oh, excuse me, Randy and. Sarah? Jason?
Aye.
And I for myself, so for approvals. You very much. Item on the agenda is plan number two thousand twenty-three dash one, Daniel Stolzfuß, three twenty-four, Willow Rose.
Good evening. My name's Tim Froslon with South Sherman. You have a problem with me showing.
Nope.
It's a little, it's going to be a little small. It's very easy. It is very easy.
You have a copy, Jason?
Jay, so I just highlighted these to make it easier.
Sorry, I forget to hit mute. I have it on my digital file here. I can pull it up.
Okay. He's laid out the twenty-four by thirty-six plans here on the table for us.
So I'm here to represent. Daniel Stolzfuß this evening. Daniel is doing a very, very small lot ad. It's actually point six acres. DMA's. Latest review comments have six comments on it. And three of those have to deal with sidewalk curbing. Sidewalk curbing and. Great. This. There was a previous plan for Daniel Stolzfuß and at that time. A deferral was requested for the streets, the curbing and the sidewalk, and that was allowed. So. Even though DMA has those three same comments on this one, we are going to ask for a deferral. Or you can either continue on with the deferral that was there. We don't have a problem with either one that you do. You can either, I have a new deferral request for those. Sections that you haven't seen this. There's a new request for the deferral of this street, the curb and the sidewalk. In all honesty, we don't have a problem with you either accepting the deferral or passing on the previous deferral to this one.
It is a very, if we go back.
Excellent step.
We have sheet two, you have sheet two and three.
Yes.
Sheet two is only a portion of the total properties involved. Could you just give a little overview of what's actually happening here? That'll help understand better. At least my response to your just thing about the.
Daniel King owns sixty-nine acres, sixty-nine and a half acres. Daniel Stolzfuß owns one point five. Daniel King is allowing Daniel Stolzfuß to purchase point six acres, which is what this little piece right here is.
Green is the same.
Is this property here? So this whole plan was, this whole project is based on the orange. And only the orange. We're, we're not doing anything to anybody's tract. Other than adding point six acres to this little green spot right here.
Very, very simple.
It's incredibly simple. There is one thing that we are working on, which was on the previous DMA's. Review, and that is Daniel, Daniel King, because we're taking ground. Point six acres of his property. DMA would like to see us do something with the floodplain. So we had gone out, relocated the manholes that were along the floodplain or along the creek. And it turns out that we will need to plant roughly twenty-one hundred trees.
It'll be a healthy area.
Yeah, it'll be very nice. However. In return for the twenty-one hundred trees, we're hoping to get some kind of credit. So when Daniel King. Decides he's going to tear down these buildings, which he is going to do after all this is done, where you'll see us again. He's going to tear down a couple of buildings and put a bigger building up. So we're going to. See if we can get some kind of credit because of the twenty-one hundred trees. It sounds like Lancaster County Conservation District and the township may help him out with the. But one of the comments that DMA has is that we will be, we should have another meeting concerning that. And I wanted to get through this before we. be, we should have another meeting concerning that. And I wanted to get through this before we, we set one of those up. So it's a very simple, easy plan. Right now, it's just a half acre lot add-on. The three deferrals, unless you want to carry over the deferrals from the previous plan.
Yeah, I think, I think, sorry, for the green, we'll want to continue those deferrals as before, and then have new deferrals for the new.
Yeah, just your explanation, what I was asking for. Lot one, which is the green. There was no referral for the other sixty-five acres.
Correct.
Which now is part of this project. So there was no previous deferral in that to carry over. So you're, and I'm not sure what your waiver you brought tonight request.
It is a deferral.
But for everything.
It would be a deferral. And you may, it's a copy, if you'd like to look over that. That's the we, we created the deferral, but we, we didn't submit it because we weren't sure how you wanted to handle it. We're going to handle it any way, any way you want to handle it.
Well, the other part, part of this property is light industrial and part of it's in business park. And I believe
Yes, the south.
Doesn't require curb inside. Industrial property does not require curb inside. So the light industrial is, is it this side of the railroad track? It is a railroad track dividing line?
Yes. Yeah, the business park to the north, light industrial to the south.
So actually, all the roadways. And that's right, the roadways along all, so it'd be both. So actually, there was a deferral or road improvement, curbs and sidewalks, since you were in the last time. I don't believe you were in before that changed. That light industrial and agricultural don't require curbs and sidewalks.
I think, I think, I think Scott's view actually says that in the last, the last so actually says it's needed somewhere and it's not needed somewhere else.
Yeah. So now the roadway is one thing, yeah, but the curbs and sidewalks are a different issue. And you're talking about street improvements. So I'm not sure how I treat this yet, but and, and I think the language can be worked out with staff better than tonight, but that's it.
Yeah, it's just, it's just we're willing to.
Go to the supervisors, okay?
We were willing to do whatever you folks wanted us to do.
I didn't clarify to staff what specifically required. I think that the deferral might only be now for the business and the business partners for street improvements, curbs and sidewalks. But in the industrial zone, if I don't be for street improvements to carry over. Because the street improvements you have to do. But curbs and sidewalks, you don't have to, any industrials, okay? The light industrial. So the language is maybe getting, I'm getting down.
You would like it to be more specific.
Just short occasion, it doesn't actually even ask for a deferral. So I think. Daryl's correcting the ax on the sidewalks. Streets.
Streets are, yeah. As the, the ordinance was amended a year or so. Talks to curbs and sidewalks and certain zones.
Sure.
And so anyway, yeah, and, and it's right, if you're, and I didn't read this, but thank you, Randy, if it's a modification, but you're not asking for a modification. Then actually, the language be a wave, I mean, a deferral, excuse me, a deferral.
What's he saying? Okay, he's calling modification. Yeah, it's shouldn't be much, it should be deferral of those. But we can, I mean.
I, I wouldn't get confused with the previous defer. I would focus on today.
Sure. Absolutely. That's why we, that, that's why that was sent in and we weren't sure. And our review response kind of says it's whatever the staff wants us to do. It can be, it can be separate. We can make them each separate. So it goes with lot one, goes with lot two, and so on and so forth.
Getting it to sense that the furl's okay. It's the language of the question.
Yep.
Asking you to work out staff.
Sure.
Based on the ordinances and, and specific. And then the two zoning districts, which are different.
Absolutely. So then this evening, we would just be asking for your, you to recommend approval to the supervisors for the lot.
At the time of the, you know, March seventh letter from Dave Miller, that were, and as you've been, you came to where they were asked at that point. Covered that in three or four of it.
Yeah, three of the groups.
Are directly related to the the other, the other one is that we meet with staff again. There is one for corner markers. We'd like to give out a a surveyor. We typically will give a surveyor letter of when the surveyor went out, put the pins in and things like that. We don't like to give those out for, as a review response, because that means that we're presuming you've already approved the plan.
The intention in the letter is if you do it before approval and advise us of that, you don't have to buy financial security. If you don't do it before approval, you have to provide financial security in the event that you don't do it so that we can have it done.
They're already in. I just didn't want to, they just didn't want to give you a letter saying they were in yet.
It's one or the other, the letter, that's how they said they're in for a financial security.
Yeah. I just don't like, you know, jumping the gun. And of course, the needs.
Yeah. Yes, to be reported before. Jason, comments?
Nope, not right now.
It's here. I have.
Totally.
And, and the first comment is, regards to repairing buffer, and you just made reference to that. You've shown it here, delineated it on the plan.
Which, which comment?
Repairing buffer.
The very one, very. Yeah, it's the, that's what we're going to speak with the staff of, sure.
Yeah, we'll work that.
When I my trigger staff always coming from the plan. And for the repairing buffer, there should be a plan.
Yes.
The main easement, which is not going to be the lines you have drawn there.
No. What we did is we, we put the sewer line on. We know there's a twenty, you have a twenty foot wide easement around that. When this plan works its way into fruition, and it should very soon after this, there'll be, we'll have a twenty foot wide easement around your sanitary sewer. We can't put, we can't put trees in your easement.
The buffer easement, O and M, and we'll work all that out.
Do you want delineate any?
Absolutely.
And along with that, you know.
Yes.
You would draft and submit to the township for the solicitor to review and bless.
Yes.
So we're just for any easement. That's, yeah, would be the other part of this first comment from our side, yeah.
Correct.
Would be clearly delineated and O and M free.
Are we, and I should ask this, are we as a condition of approval, would we need to show that for this plan?
Yeah, we'd like to see that, the riparian buffer on there. Yeah.
If it's not shown on the plan and we approve it, we can't come back and ask for it.
So that could be. I just find it, I just find it.
I was happy to see that you had delineated something for the recurring buffer. I thought you're, you're one step away.
We are. The, the thing that I'm worried about is that we're, Daniel Stolzfuß, who is getting a half an acre, is going to have to pay for us to come up with a riparian buffer that doesn't even come close to his, that's not at his property. That's what I'm, I, he, you know, we have two Daniels working here. King is giving the guy a half an acre, and we have to do a whole bunch of work for a lot add-on. I can understand it for Mr. King, who is going to actually do stormwater. We're, I'm going to do whatever you guys want, whatever the board wants, you know, whatever the commissioners want us to do. I just think it's a little it's going to have to be done.
It's my.
It's going to have to, it's going to have to be done for King. So we'll just.
Right. There's two parties involved. Who pays for it? I'm not sure. That's another discussion outside here, but.
The problem is you do this, and then you never do the next phase, and then that would never happen.
Or, or he doesn't buy this ground and we never do it. You know, he may come back and say, if you're going to make me pay for this, I don't want the half an acre. And then this never gets done. I don't think he's going to do that. I think the King and Stolzfußes are going to be okay. But I mean, this is the, the only reason this is an issue is because of a half an acre.
What, I'm just curious, from a township's perspective, what triggered the need for the buffer? Like as a result?
Well, we, the township saw an opportunity because this is that larger property is being brought in because it's given a piece to the, to the corner property there. So being that there's a surface water body on there in our riparian buffer requirement, we saw the the opportunity for the
Township saw an opportunity. No, you're right. You're absolutely right.
They're going to benefit as well.
Yeah, oh, yes.
Oh, yeah, it's a benefit.
Yeah, I know. I'm just kidding you.
Yeah, no, part of this is, it preserves that
Yes.
area of watershed. Many of the little creeks and streams, Topper Run included, have gutted out a channel, and it's not good for floodplain management, not good for
Right, so.
Not good for a host of things. So it is a benefit to them and their property, but also it's a benefit for the township who is promoting good stream bank stabilization and preservation.
I've seen him do it. It's, it's pretty impressive when, when Lancaster County Conservation comes in and does their steep stream restoration. It's pretty impressive.
And as you mentioned in the beginning, there are opportunities for funding to assist with this that could be used to cover a lot of the cost for that.
Right.
And this would be the first step to say, I'm on board. Now, can you get on board to help?
So you're correct. It's not an actual requirement for the buffer. We saw the opportunity for both parties to benefit. That's, that's all I can say.
It's okay.
Work on that.
We, we love, personally, I like it. I love having stuff in there. But I also love that if he's going to do something, maybe he gets some credit for it. He doesn't have to do a full-blown stormwater plan because of that. We're, we're, we're working on him right now. We just didn't get
To that point.
To that point.
Yeah.
It's going to be, somebody's going to pay for it, and it's okay. I was just, I, I, I just think it's funny that it's a half an acre. Triggered the whole thing, but it's okay. I mean, I would have a serious problem if this guy wasn't doing anything. If he was just giving the guy half an acre. Because
Yeah.
Because he is doing something, I think it's a benefit.
I think the buffer there would be part of a future algae plan for the greenhouses on the parent track. For, for this one, I don't think it would have to be required. It's not required. So so we, yeah.
Well, yeah, if we don't bring it up, we miss the opportunity. So I think the dialogue has started
Yeah.
On the right path.
We have had, we have had, you know, a sit-down with staff, with, with the engineer and discussed it. You know, that both parties, the Stolzfußes, the Kings, were both involved in the, in, in the conversation, said nobody had a problem with it. It's going to, it, it needs to get done. I was just concerned that this lot add-on be approved while this is going on.
You're right. The buffer's not required for this, so it can move forward without that condition down. So just to go out what I told you before about.
Do you have any vision as to when the other demolition and other work would be on?
We have a job for, we have a job going for right now. Or the, the thing that's holding us up is whether or not the township will, will get, would give the credit for the, for the trees. Because if the, if the township doesn't give the credit for the trees, we have to do soil testing. If the township gives credit for the trees, we don't have to do soil testing. So once this is, you know, and we can discuss this.
Can I interrupt for a second? Sorry, this is Tara Hitchens. So the way the stormwater ordinance would work here is if Mr. King comes back in with a plan to remove the greenhouses that he has, which is about nine thousand square feet of greenhouses. As he comes back with a stormwater management plan, he's going to be required by the ordinance, required, not requested, required to put in that riparian buffer at his own cost at, under, under the plan. And that will count. Right, I think that will, that will count towards meeting the stormwater ordinance. That will not count towards meeting any credits, none, not for Mr. King and not for the township. Because it's a requirement of the stormwater plan, and that's how the MS four is written. So if you're meeting the stormwater ordinance, you can't count it. If you're doing it prior to needing a stormwater plan, which is what we've talked about with Tim, then you can count the riparian buffer towards the credits. And that's why we talked during the store, the subdivision plan to put the riparian buffer in. So we're more than willing to work with Mr. King to get him a reduction, to get up the township reduction, and so that he can utilize some portion of that riparian buffer for the excess greenhouses that he's proposing in the future.
Have to do that now before submitting a formal land development plan for the greenhouses.
For the storm, the stormwater plan for the greenhouses. That's correct. Because if he submits the stormwater plan, it's a requirement. As part of the subdivision plan, we're requesting it.
So, but could we move forward with the lot add-on and then continue the conversation with Mr. King to do the riparian buffer in advance of doing any land development plan for greenhouses? What do you get to credits then?
We can make it a condition of the lot add-on that Mr. King continues to work with the township on the riparian buffer to obtain the credit for both the township and Mr. King. And, and as Tim noted, Mr. King seemed open to the idea. He, look, he wants to pass the farm on to one of his children who, who doesn't want to pay a stormwater fee for the next so many years or a reduced fees for so many years so that they can continue utilizing the farm in the way that they are. But, Tim, if I've misstated anything on Mr. King's part, please correct me.
No, we're going to do whatever you guys want us to do. It's, that's the bottom line. It's got to be done the way the township wants it. If we want stuff approved, the township is going to tell us how they want it approved, and that's.
But, but I think this is a win-win, as Colin said, for both Mr. King and the township.
Oh, yeah. Yeah. And the environment and the Chesapeake and everybody, it's a win-win. I just, I just want to make sure that this plan makes it through.
I understand that.
Well, that's all I'm worried about right now.
Thank you, Tara. So maybe to summarize, for the planning commission's recommendation could be such that we would recommend that prior to going to the supervisors, you continued to work with staff to determine the best, since there are options, the best option. To determine the best, since there are options, the best option and moving forward with either the repairing buffer now. As part of this lot add on, where there are obvious advantages for both parties. Or if they wait till the land development plan comes, when they're gonna remove those structures. Then it's, as discussed now, it's a requirement and there is no credit then. So, is, do you want?
Yeah, that's true.
There's no credit then. Okay, so there are options and I think it's important that you. Have that discussion with the owners and yourself and the township to determine what's the best way to move forward. The township's gonna get it regardless. I think you heard that.
Well, they won't, they won't get it if we get rid of that half an acre. And never, and the guys don't come back.
Right, but it, then it removes the opportunity for the large property to do it. Voluntarily, which I'm understanding from different people, they are in favor of. And they lose that opportunity for some negotiation. And when they come back in, then they've lost that. So there, there are advantages to doing it, doing the lot add on with the repairing buffer.
So, Tara, correct me if I'm wrong, because I heard something slightly different. So, you could proceed with the lot add on. Have that approved and then work with Mr. King to do the riparian buffer, just as a stormwater credit project. Not part of the greenhouse, but just to do the riparian buffer.
We could. If we, if that is a condition of the approval to, of this lot add on. That is the prerogative of the planning commission.
It's like any other.
Look, at this point, both of these lots are in for some type of action under the storm, this, excuse me, subdivision plan. So, that, if that's the case and they wanna move forward, we're asking Mr. King to work with us on the riparian buffer. In fact, the township has said, you know, we'll, we'll help with the partnership in whatever way that is necessary. As Tim noted, the conservation district may be involved, there may be crap monies involved, and there may be township stormwater funds involved. To move that riparian buffer forward.
Plan approval, we do with conditions. I heard Tara say it'd be a condition of approval, so it would be. Something we'd have to recommend, that we could recommend, but it'd be up to the supervisors to. And that's why I was saying. That they, him and the owners work with staff beforehand to work that out. Before they go to the supervisors meeting for approval, that they would have, have that defined.
If Mr. King wants his project to keep going, we have to do the buffer. That's as simple as it is.
Now, I want everyone to understand that the buffer doesn't have to be done and planted. By the time this project moves forward. That is not the case. Um, that, that can happen, you know, in a, in a timeframe that's reasonable. The agreement to move forward with the buffer is what needs to happen.
Yes, right.
Right, and that agreement might be any agreement, it'd be.
Yeah.
A bit of an approval, but the agreement was about the language for timeframe, etcetera. Yeah. And, and that, that's why I'm saying would be worked out with staff. Before they go and have a lengthy discussion with the supervisor, as well as, you know, one year, two years, five years.
I think we brought, too. I think we brought up a timeframe also, so.
And that's why I'm saying the details, just as with the, the fur request. Get the language specific to the two parcels and I'd kinda stay away from the previous deferals.
Yeah.
Address this as a new, and then the two zoning districts, etcetera, different in the ordinance now. And then this, the language of this agreement, you could work out more easily.
Yeah, like, right, that might be a solicitor.
Regardless of what staff works out, the solicitor would review that agree.
The agreements with Mr. King and the township, not Mr. Stolzusus.
Just a few people keeping some obvious notes to talk.
Yeah, I would like to revisit the deferrals for a moment.
Yes, I think, as I said before, there should, should be a new deferral for sidewalk curbs, street winding in the BP zone. And street winding in the I ones, and then continue the deferrals for the existing green. Or new lot.
So, new deferral.
Yeah.
Existing deferral.
Correct.
New deferral.
Correct.
Okay. Continued, right, continued.
Yeah. 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 That's why I'm saying with, and, as I said, I saw people making notes, Colin was one of them. All that was brought up, the two parcels to the, etcetera, yeah.
I think, I think this was, I think this was rushed, just to get it, just to, just to have some kind of idea of what we were.
You can just write draft on it. Take it back with you.
Pretend you never saw this.
That's a good draft. But, also the deferrals. And then you're, all of the others, we do have a, sort of. Counting stat, also dated January twenty seventh. That has, have you seen, uh, new comments revised, you need for the, the lot should be reported. And plan should depict the online web on septic system. And confirm that they are not located in the transfer parcel, so that.
Yeah, yeah, that's something that we just missed.
Yes, that, well, is in that favor, but for clarity, where is it? So, you don't have any issues.
You're one of the few townships we go to that actually pays attention to that.
To the wells or the county?
To the county. I don't, I don't really say, it's, you know, we, Strassner's does a whole lot of work in the southern area.
So, any other discussion? Not. I'm looking for motion.
And we might have amendments as we go on. I, that we recommend to the board supervisors. The conditional group of lot twenty twenty three, that, or plan twenty twenty three dash one. Daniel Stolzusus, three twenty four, Little Road, with the final subdivision lot add on. Recognizing the conditions outlined in the David Miller Associate Letter of March seventh, twenty twenty three. With the, and the county, county planning department letter, the, on January twenty seventh, twenty twenty three, the following. Additions. That a new deferral request be submitted to the township. For the deferral of curb sidewalk and streets within the area included in the business park zone. Street deferral be submitted for the, for the parcel included in the ag or industrial zone.
Business park.
That, first of all, is the business park, curbside and streets, which is business. Street curb, or streets is ag and, and.
Well, it's like industrial, right? Excuse me, it's, it's like industrial, not ag, yeah.
I said, like industrial and ag, uh, just looking at David Miller's letter. And then to continue the existing deferrals for curb sidewalk and streets on the existing lot one. And that Mr. King and township reached an agreement. To move forward with the riparian buffer as a condition of approval of the lot.
You then. For the motion, we have a second to that motion.
I like the second.
About the second. So we have the motion and the second. Any discussion on that? If not. Jason?
Hi.
Myself, I don't think so, you have for all of these. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, folks.
Appreciate it.
Your folks.
Our new business. East Lampeter Township Planning Commission Annual Report. The Colin's gonna brief us on.
The report on you outlined, uh, plans, uh. Request you saw in twenty twenty two, uh, looking at the logs. I did take out, we just not, didn't know what we did for. Um, in order, when I took out any stormwater plans, uh, anything that was submitted. Didn't make it to the PC or the board supervisors, so that's why I had a file number skip around. The last two projects, chart. Okay, so the two players you saw, like the Rockville Master Plan and four fifty eight Mouse City Road, they were submitted in twenty twenty two. Uh, you did not see them until twenty twenty three, which is why I left them off of this chart. Um, it will be on the twenty twenty three chart, being that that's the year that. Took action on. So, moving forward, that'll be on, that'll how, that's how we'll operate. Plans submitted, year before, but I'm gonna.
Twenty. Two one and the twenty two, twenty three that we did in January report, you'll leave those to.
I can, I can take those off, or, no, he didn't.
Said.
Right, what I said was, I'll take the three that were submitted in twenty twenty two. These two are not, I already, those, the last two we saw tonight, we're not on this. So, those are on, those will stay on. Yeah.
spreadsheet with Colin's survivor, there is a. Letter. The planning commission to the supervisors. Some, chart. Projections for twenty twenty three. Colin's presentation and. Or recommendation.
I'm, I'm, we recommend approval of the East Lampeter Township Planning Commission Annual Report.
Open, uh, by Sarah, second by Randy. Randy? Jason?
Hi.
And myself, and I, unanimous to move the report to, uh, the supervisor. If you have a file, I'll let it sign it. Item on the agenda is the Greater Lancaster Heritage Pathway.
Yeah, so the township, where it's listed for a grant, would extend the Lancaster Heritage Pathway of an additional one point five miles. Um, which was there. Further into the city of Lancaster, so, um, we would like a letter of support, um, from the planning. Uh, I, included, I apologize for the graphics are not great, but. Again, that's an additional one point five miles, um, that would help extend the trail.
Land with the blue masthead and a green line, um, this would pretty much go from. Number sixteen to seventeen. Is that right? Sixteen's about the end of where the cul-de-sac, the turnaround is on.
That's correct. It would go from the, uh, trailhead that's being constructed behind the Pennsylvania College of Health Sciences. And it would go northeastward, towards the Geist Road, um. Where the township line with Upper Lacob Township is. That's where we're applying for the funds for, through the C two, P two for DCNR. And just so everyone's aware, the township meets with the, all of the municipalities. That are part of the Lancaster Heritage Pathway and the development of that pathway. And we have actually changed the name to not be the Greater Lancaster Heritage Pathway, but to be the Lancaster Heritage Pathway. And that has been a decision by all of the member municipalities of this, this trail, which. When fully completed, will be approximately thirteen to fifteen miles long. And traverse through, from east to west through the center of the county.
Hey, well, thank you. That's a question I had, because all that I've seen to date has been greater. And you clarified that, why the letter says Lancaster Heritage Pathway with, without the greater.
Right.
Can I ask a question?
Absolutely.
Where it says short term and long term, does that matter at all? Or is this just like kind of a short term idea with a long term goal?
So, that the short term and long term were part of the Lancaster County Active Transportation Plan. Which the township participated in, about helping to develop. And it was thought that there were, in a short term, there could be a connection to, uh, on, on easier. And quotes, easier route, not always easier. And then in the long term, there could be more formal connections. In some cases, East Lampeter has said. With, how do we look at both of those connections, especially heading towards the city? Because then we can make a nice loop trail as well to add to the potentials and. You know, quite honestly, some people may be perfectly comfortable riding along the Walnut Street Extension. And then along Walnut Street down into the city, while others may be more comfortable riding. I, the Pitney Road Route, which has yet to be determined what that route that will exactly take. And may, may traverse on road or off road into Conestoga Pines and the Waterworks. So, there are long term, which were looked at as more of a final. Route for the trail and short term, which were, could be accommodated on, on road immediately if needed.
Thank you.
In my view, too, going out to Geist Road. Uh, will that connect to the paved part of Geist Road? Some of it's paved and some of it's across the, uh, across the goat path now is dirt. So is this.
It's a gravel road.
Gravel, well, a very dirty gravel road.
Okay, so it would, we're, we would look at constructing a trailhead in that area as well. Off of Geist Road. And we may need to look at the directionality of Geist Road and how people actually utilize that. Because we will need to make accommodations for the continued use of the, um, model airplane or, um, remote airplane. Uh, group that utilizes the Upper Lacob portion of. model airplane or, um, remote airplane, uh, group that utilizes the Upper Lacob portion of the right of way, the Penn Dot right of way, but we, we will look at all of that as part of this, um, design and construction.
This will be a paved path, except for the equestrian.
So if there's enough funding for both pathways, the Lancaster Heritage Pathway pedestrian and bicycle would continue to be a macadam pathway. The Lancaster County Active Transportation Plan calls for the equestrian pathway to be crushed down.
I like going out to Geist Road because you're really getting out to secondary and tertiary township roads that are more favorable for bicycling than like Greenfield, which would, where it's gonna, and Pitney, where it's gonna dump you on now. If you want to not drive to the trailhead, but actually ride your bicycle there, you could ride here from the rural areas and on the path all the way into the city, as you mentioned, and connect into other areas without having to contend with the vehicular traffic.
Right. And if you recall, the Lancaster Active Transportation Plan, you know, went through the fact that from the Pennsylvania College of Health Sciences into the city, this is really looked at as a commuter route, an alternate commuter route. Because, um, the way it's designed, it could be traveled at a, at a slightly higher speed for bicycles than, um, you know, there might be fast walkers out there too, but for bicycles, then the one and a half miles northeast towards Geist Road. But that doesn't mean that an active bicyclist couldn't leave the Geist Road area and continue into the city.
Yes. Yeah. Well, I see bicyclist on twenty-three and concern for them, just riding twenty-three into the city and past the country club, you know, through the township and on it, it's it's, there's a lot of left turns and a very busy road for Route twenty-three.
So as we move forward with this funding request, we would, we would ask that the planning commission support that.
I don't know if we uh, we need a vote on this.
I think it would be best if the planning commission recommended that the chair sign the letter of support.
Would there be a recommendation to have the chair sign the letter of support?
So moved.
So a motion from Randy, do we have a second? And a second from Sarah, Randy, in favor, Sarah, Jason?
Hi.
So by, so unanimous. Thank you, Tara.
Thank you all.
And the new business, moving on to briefing, Sarah and Samuel, excuse me, Samuel and Sarah King. Twenty-three oh three Lehman Road, we have a plan.
Yes. So yes, twenty-three oh three Lehman Road, just a simple, uh, a lot add on, um, they're adding a piece and it's gonna create a new piece of one point five acres.
Is there a similar riparian buffer issue with this one?
There is not.
Saw the screen like that.
I was the only briefing item. Any other business? I did have the one I had talked about. And then to next month's meeting being Tuesday after Sunday Eastern. If, uh, and the reason I was asking, I am not gonna be able to make the meeting. Just wanted to make sure we had a forum, definitely one night here. Uh, we need at least three to hold the meeting, if not, it'd be rescheduled. Jerry said he is available since he wasn't denied, he responded. Jason, are you available on the eleventh of April?
I am, yes, sir. Yep, I'm available.
Okay. Sarah?
Yeah.
So enjoy. I won't be able to zoom, I'll be on a plane coming back, so I can't even zoom in, but the four of you.
So I also have to make the motions though.
If not, I'll look for a motion to adjourn.
I'd like the motion to adjourn.
I have the motion, do I have a second? Randy with a second and all those in favor, Randy?
Hi.
Hi, Jason, I am, so, thank you.